Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024 City Council Meeting. Would you please all join me before the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Morris.
Here.
Weir.
Yes.
Smack.
Here.
Clements.
Here.
Dewater.
Here.
Item four, approval of the December 3rd, 2024 agenda. Take a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Item five is public comment. If you would like to address the mayor and council, please come up to the podium.
I have a complaint to make. I've lived in this town for sixty years and after and over, and I have never seen the roads left as bad as they were all day Monday after that snow. Those roads, every intersection that there was, was slick. You could not stop. I'd even drove around looking to see if any of them been soldered or sanded, and I sure could not see anything. But I left my driveway, backed out in the street, and went slid clear over to the curb on the other side. I can understand the main streets, not that, but these intersections, they've gotta be sanded and salted at that time. I went up to East End, slid halfway out into the middle of the road, and I was barely crawling when I stopped. I left town, came back at two o'clock in the afternoon, and I didn't see anything any better when I came back. So I don't know why they weren't sanded, but boy, I could not see. I drove around looking, and I could not see sand or salt anywhere on those intersections. Now, the three main roads weren't bad, but those intersections, they gotta do something with those. Somebody get killed on them.
Thank you, John. I appreciate it.
Hi. I also struggled on Monday morning getting to school, and I know that you have a limited crew, and we're going after a Thanksgiving weekend. So I don't know what the protocol was, but I did struggle getting my daughter to school. I should've left about ten minutes earlier. And, you know, it was the first snow of the year. Everybody forgets how to drive. I am no exception. So, you know, I don't want to be too hard on our street crew because I know they're somewhat of a skeleton crew, but I think that's one more reason to look at getting them some more assistance. They need some more people, even if it's only seasonal. And I think that that might relieve some of the pressure off of Chris and the street crew. I'm sure they didn't intend on having snow on Monday morning, and they had plans to do other things. But yeah, I'll agree. We did need salt and sand, especially on McCoy. That was the road I drove on. When I did get my daughter from school, it wasn't a problem coming home. And once I got on the highway on the way to Raymond, because we have to go to Raymond to meet the commuter bus, it wasn't a problem anymore either on the highway. And I was actually in front of the sand truck, so I know county sand trucks came through twice. That wasn't at all what my intention was when I came up to the podium, but John did have a very valid point, so I wanted to second that. In regards to the water trail project, it looks really good down there, and we do see some places for parking. Granted, most people that use a kayak are gonna come in a car without a trailer, but I do see a need to expand the parking down there to accommodate trailers because occasionally there are large groups that go together, and there are some rental companies that are going to show up with trailers, and there's really no place for them to go except for the shoulder. Secondly, on the water trail project, this has been brought up numerous times by numerous people. We really need to get that area dredged before the season starts. And I spoke with Sandy about this a little bit a couple weeks ago. One of the biggest issues we have on this stretch of river in Evansdale is that the Cedar River Cleanup Festival is a grand organization that's done wonderful work for the last thirty years. They stop at Deerwood. So we are at least thirty years behind from Waterloo on cleaning up that river. With those shallow waters there, people have to get out of their kayaks to assist or, you know, various reasons why you might get out of your kayak in shallow water. That could be very dangerous. You know, for many, many years, beer bottles were a regular thing to throw into the river. They're coming to the surface. I know that we've had people lose motors with propellers in this area, this stretch of the Evansdale area of the Cedar River. You know, we gotta do something about that. I don't know if dredging is enough, but I would also like to see Evansdale join the Cedar Valley or Cedar River Cleanup Festival organization and get that route extended, maybe as far as Gilbertville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak this evening? Number six, approval of consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven, approval of the resolution calendar.
Motion to approve real resolution calendar.
It's not gonna...
Roll call, please.
Morris.
Here.
Weir.
Yeah.
Yes.
Smack.
Yes.
Clements.
Yes.
Dewater.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Resolutions are approved. Number eight is social media. This has been a lot in the news. A lot of reading material's been coming out regarding social media and posting. This is just a general discussion about that. It's not anything we're gonna approve tonight. Just wanted to get your thoughts. I did put in front of you just one example of many, and that was about the Lafayette Road project. And if you look on the back, even though it does clearly state, "We appreciate your patience. Please contact City Hall with any questions." And then, you know, people asking questions. We don't have the staff to monitor the Facebook page, nor the time, staff or time, to do it. I know that Misty had been to a class, and they talked about social media, and she talked to me about some concerns. You know, you get a records request on there, you get, you know, something that you have to address, and we're, you know, we're not actively monitoring it.
And we have to keep records of it.
And we have to keep records of it. So it was just, you know, there's been a lot of talk lately about social media, and she had actually went to a class regarding that, but just kinda wanna know your thoughts.
I'm certainly not in favor of hiring people to do that.
It's a full-time.
Yeah, I can see how it can be. I mean, I'm involved with advertising through it with my business, and, you know, the constant comments, I mean, it's hard to keep up with them, and when there's, you know, other requests coming in from different avenues too, it's difficult. And you guys have got full-time jobs on top of that. You know, it is a good, I can't say that it's the best. I don't know what the best is because there's not just one method, but it is a good method to get word out for in certain instances, not necessarily emergency instances, but something like that. Yeah, letting people know that there's two-week shutdown of that intersection. That works.
Right.
But it can't be the sole, I guess, mode.
Well, and we have, you know, other ways of contacting us, you know, not just the phone. You can go to our website. Everybody's email is available there. You know, we also have a contact form that's really easy to utilize on our website. You know, it just says, "Contact us," and it opens up, put your name, put your question or whatever, and we receive that. It comes directly into our email, and we respond to those on a daily basis. So that's just another thought. And this was just, you know, kinda getting your thoughts, and I love the platform for keeping the public aware, involved, letting them know what's coming up. And, you know, I wouldn't wanna see that go away, you know? It's just a really great way to keep in communication. It's hard these days. You know, it used to be the Waterloo Courier, and, you know, that's pretty much gone to the wayside. They have the E-dition. I guess people read and what other ways to do it. Our Evansdale newspaper is great, but that's just once a month, you know? And you've gotta remember to throw all the stuff in there for the whole month so people don't miss things.
Is this platform initially, I'm sorry. Is this platform initially intended as more of a bulletin board type?
I believe so.
To notify notifications as opposed to a, you know, conversation?
Yeah.
Well, and you can turn off comments, but at the same time, you don't wanna do that because then it's like, well, why don't they wanna talk to us? You know, and it's not that you don't wanna talk to them. It's just hard to talk to everybody all at the same time. So I don't know if you could really do that, you know, with transparency in mind, I guess.
Well, I mean, with the telephone and the website, they have, citizens have plenty of opportunities to contact us. And the Facebook page, turning off the comments, I've used a lot of those where you can't comment. It doesn't seem like the end of the world.
Yeah, certain posts, I can see that being okay, but certain posts, I could see that people would have an issue with that.
But then that means, you know, the mayor saying, somebody monitoring it and responding, which is worse, no response or not being able to comment? Kind of a trade-off.
Well, that's what we had heard, is no response. People don't, you know, it's like, we don't have to stop to...
If they have a time-sensitive question and you miss it...
When we're done discussing it, you'll have an opportunity to comment on agenda items.
Yeah, if there's a time-sensitive question and there's nobody monitoring it, then, you know, you're gonna miss that.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, again, one of the things we had heard is somebody was upset because we didn't reply, and it's like, okay, well, we're not on Facebook all day.
Shouldn't be, anyway.
Well, in addition to the... There's some cities that have full-time staff to handle their...
In addition to the ability to leave a message on the website, they also can call on the phone, day or night, and if it's not in business hours, can leave a message, and then you get those messages first thing in the morning when you get here.
Or even stop in.
Yeah.
We do. We have people stop in every day. Just food for thought. John had his hand up.
I'm just wondering, what are you trying to accomplish?
We're just having a discussion if you'd like to come up to the podium and discuss it with the council.
And go ahead, Mayor. I will throw my thoughts in. I just didn't wanna step on anybody.
Oh, okay.
Obviously not being there to see. So you're fine. You're fine. If someone's headed up, go ahead.
Yep, she's standing up.
I'm just wondering what you guys are trying to accomplish with the conversation, what the end result would look like or what you're looking for?
We're just, it's just a conversation. We're just having a conversation on, people are asking us questions. We don't have the time to monitor that. Is that gonna get us in any type of a situation if there was something on there we didn't respond to that we needed to respond to?
Okay.
Because it's not monitored.
So whether we turn comments off or just, you know...
Right. Can somebody get a notification when a comment is made, or do you guys have it set up like that on a post?
I don't know how it's set up. How do you have it set up?
I don't know. I didn't set it up initially, but...
I mean, you should be able to set it up so somebody in the office can get an email notification of comments. That might help you guys.
It's about having the manpower to add that whole aspect of constantly monitoring it. We don't have the resources to do so at this point.
Okay. Do you guys constantly monitor emails?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of business going on.
That's almost, that's almost a full-time job too. You know what I'm saying? Yeah.
I hear what you're saying as well. It's just they've got this workload that's existed before Facebook ever did, and they gotta continue that. And it's a lot of work. I've tried keeping up with my Facebook all the time at work, and it's impossible because people just keep throwing stuff back and forth, and it's hard when you're answering the phones and answering emails and dealing with customers and...
Yeah, a lot of comments don't have to be responded to, but like, questions would be. So is there another avenue people can go to ask questions online then?
Mm-hmm, to our website.
To our website.
Okay.
Yep. We have a contact us form, or there's, you know, everybody's...
What you just said earlier, but there's no, like, a forum or anything? And if there was, you guys wanna have the time to monitor it, is what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah.
That's unfortunate.
Hold on, Justin. John's stepping up.
Yeah, no, no problem.
You were mentioning about the Lafayette Road project. A question I wanna ask while you were talking about that. Why did they close the road all the way to North Roosevelt Road?
Because they're working on that intersection. Yeah, they actually have a huge panel in that intersection connecting the stormwater. They're continuing to work on the project throughout the winter as time allows, or weather allows, to get the stormwater system in.
Isn't that, they're trying to get it from there down there. They gotta do that.
Yeah, they're actually doing it, kinda starting in the middle and then going...
Because that's a long stretch down there.
Yeah, it is.
Now, how are the people getting in? They can get in and out all this time?
They do have, you know, through traffic, through traffic for people that...
I can wait for Justin if he wants to.
Go ahead, Laura.
Go ahead, Laura. Okay.
Personally, I think Facebook is a nightmare. Everything about it is crazy. We got hackers coming in, developing fake accounts so that they can make comments just to start arguments. We, you know, I was genuinely traumatized during the Lyric and Elizabeth situation where I was running the Facebook page for the, organizing the search for them. And it needed to be done, but I sure do empathize with you guys about it. I don't wanna be on Facebook at all, and I think it's kinda crappy that we have to be on Facebook to get information. As far as the comments go and keeping up with the comments, you could put a disclaimer at the bottom of your post that says, "This Facebook page is not monitored due to lack of resources in City Hall offices." And shut off comments, you know? Please reach us a different way. But I still go back to, we've got the elders in the community who have no interest in learning how to use the internet. We've got young people that are young adults in the community who have zero interest in Facebook. They wanna be on a different platform altogether. The easiest and most simplest way, I'm gonna go back to this time and time again, and I'll die on this hill, is to set up a portal so that everybody has an opportunity when they sign up for their water bill or they sign up for their dog lessons, or dog licenses, I mean, to enter into this portal and say, "I want information about road closures," or I, you know, they can click the boxes. And then you send out a text alert or an email or an automated recorded phone call and, you know, let people figure out how they wanna be notified. But I don't think social media should be the way to notify people. Social media is supposed to be about celebrations, and when we give an opportunity for negative energy, negativity in general, people are gonna jump on that. And it's not just our people from this community. It's people from Waterloo. It's people from El Grande. It's people from Texas that drove through once and stopped and had a good conversation at the truck stop, you know? And then we've got the hackers and the crazy people, and just be done with Facebook. It's, Facebook is someplace where we post our Fourth of July celebration. It's where we post our Halloween times, pictures of what the community is doing or what our streets department or our police officers are doing and celebrating. It's not meant for, in my opinion, it's not meant for spreading bad news, but when it's the only platform to communicate, that's what we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Go ahead, Justin.
So, yeah, I had conversations with several people. This actually came up, I think, Sandy, Adam, I think we were at the last league, what about this time last year, I wanna say they had a social media kinda little plug of just when you should have it, and then if you do have it, yeah, what do you gotta follow the guidance on? And then distinctly, my experience, coming from the technology industry, one, the, yeah, social media can be both good and bad. You know, we're all very much familiar with that. The good side of it, though, is whether we want to accept this or not, it is the largest source of news or information delivery system to us ever. The, what has watered that down unfortunately is there's so many different platforms. So yes, do you pick one platform? Then what target group are you after? You correct, Facebook itself is an aging population, yet it's not elderly. Instagram has more popularity. X, previously Twitter, Threads, all of these other things that I won't even try to get into tonight. So where we see it is you will see companies not even worry about printed advertisement or even a digital advertisement as far as on television. So no radio, no television, none of the typical avenues. It's all social media, or they'll have availability on all social media. And to be everywhere all at once? Yeah, they have a team, not even just one person. It is a team that handles it all. So bringing that all back to the city of Evansdale, I still think social media is valid to be an avenue to get information out. Should that be our only one? No, I agree. The Evansdale newsletter has helped bring some of that back. Yeah, I would love to look at a texting-based system. We have in the past. It was a substantial financial investment that we can certainly look at again, but at the time, it was not elected to be an item to put in the budget. We're going into budget season, so this would be the great time to reconsider our options. As far as the comment and kinda where this came from, I didn't interpret this as whether we should or should not have social media. I interpreted it more of our availability to respond to people and not just respond, but respond timely. And I, there was a good question earlier of, do we not respond to email or is there a contact form? I think the caveat to that is, it isn't that we just don't necessarily have the staff. I think it's the staff to get to it timely. Because people on social media, typically you get those responses back and forth. At least I would assume in my life that I get those quicker than I do email. For example, I have a problem with a company. I bought a pair of shoes. I have a problem with them. I don't email the company anymore. I jump on their social media account because they're monitoring that way more often than they're monitoring emails. It might be days before I get an email back. So putting that into the relevance here, I think it's the timeliness of it. So, okay, do we allow commenting? Looking at how we would moderate that of, fine, nope, the city page, we turn off commenting. We have to then turn off commenting across every city entity's page. So it's an all-or-nothing thing. That is the rule. So now it's okay, it's impacting more than just the city's page. It's impacting the library's page, the police department, fire department, and so on. So now it's a bigger switch to flip. And I also am with Adam and a few others of just, yeah, we can turn it off and say, "Hey, you need to contact City Hall," but then all the other events, the other departments. And then also, it is, it is a look. It is, it is absolutely a, well, now they turned off commenting, that's just because they don't wanna replies, or they're not being transparent, or they're not allowing us to voice our opinions. So I absolutely see both sides to this of where turning it off for a benefit of not trying to silence people, but to try and say, "Hey, call us, email us, get ahold of us with these methods," as these are more often checked, versus leaving it on and saying, "Okay, they at least can comment." For example, I'm gonna bring up one that I just saw. It was within the past twenty-four hours, the city put out the tree lighting ceremony coming up this weekend. There were so many people commenting, tagging other people. "Hey, we should go. We should get together. We should just..." I see that, and it warms my heart, and I look at it and go, "Absolutely, we should not turn off commenting." Because, look, people are using it to connect, to bring people out, to come together as a community. I love to see it. But I absolutely understand the other side to say, "Hey, someone asked a question on Lafayette," or, "Hey, something wrong with the water. Hey, we're flushing hydrants," whatever. It's the whole thing, the whole city image, and we don't get back to them timely. They're gonna feel like we blew them off. So I don't think there's necessarily a natural solution. I've even been looking into auto respondents to where as soon as you comment, it'll pop up a comment. "Hey, thanks for reaching out. If you need to talk to somebody about this or need an immediate answer, call City Hall or email us." I've not found a free one of those yet, so I'm still kinda working on that. Think of the AI bots that you see on everybody's websites anymore that just have a conversation with you automatically. But where I'm leaning right now, and I will tell you, it's really just in the past day that kinda has reaffirmed me back to, I think we should leave the commenting on and continue to work with our other options on how to communicate and then how we message. Maybe it is a disclaimer under each city post. This is not monitored actively. If you need something immediately, please reach out here. I know we've had a variant of that, but if, maybe we just need a true disclaimer, common language, something. So, sorry, that's very long-winded. I had a lot of thoughts on this, and I will concede the rest of my time if I had any left.
Thank you, Justin.
Yeah, thank you for, and also for checking into that. We did get an email actually on this topic from a website company that we had been looking at last year. We were allowed to renew our, I should say, move forward with our current website company. However, it went from like $800 a year to $1,600 a year, and that will continue to progress upwards. And we, one of the companies that we were looking at actually has kind of like a, you know, kind of like alert system. People obviously would have to sign up, but that's something that we could, you know, just like you said, bring back. Let you look at or... And I know the Alert Iowa too that you can sign up for on our website. They, I don't know if that's just weather-related or there's other things too. I'm gonna look into that.
As far as like, you know, there are some people out there that want Wanda to post a picture of every missing dog that she gets a call on. That's something that can go to somebody's text that wants it, if you go with that system.
Right.
You know? And I don't wanna know every time somebody loses a cat, but my next-door neighbor's a cat lady, and she does.
Yeah.
You know?
Let's try to get away from the conversation like this. If you wanna come up to the podium, please. Yeah, I mean, if you want to address the council, please.
No, that is what we want.
Out of respect for them, yep.
That is what I think the community wants. From what I have seen on Facebook posts and other things of that nature, that does seem to be what the community wants. And if the community wants to spread word, they're gonna take a screenshot and post it on whatever group page they are, you know? So they're still gonna have those conversations, but you guys aren't gonna be stuck in the middle of it anymore.
Yeah, thank you, Laura. Thanks for everybody's feedback on that. You know, like I said, it's just something that's been near and dear to Misty and I's heart because we just, yeah. I mean, there'll be times where we miss emails until hours later, depending on how busy we get. So moving on. Number nine, request from Cedar Valley Youth Sports Association for funds in the amount of $2,500 as budgeted for FY25.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And just, we wanna thank you, Mr. Berry, just for the excellent job that you have done. We've received so many, so many positive comments and that it's moving forward, and you guys are doing the work you are to put into it, and it's pretty much a dream for all of us to have, you know, to move forward with this association for all the children in our city and surrounding cities. So thank you.
Thank you.
Number 10 is mayor and council reports. I will just do a shout-out because it kinda got posted late. We were not certain about signage and some of the other things that was going along with this lighting event. So this Saturday from four to five is gonna be lights on Lafayette. It's gonna be our first annual, but we used to do, we used to light the tree years back. So there's gonna be Hot Cocoa, the coffee shop, what's the name of that again?
Barnwood Brew.
Barnwood Brew. They're gonna have specials on coffees and teas they also have for kids. They're gonna have specials on coffees and teas they also have for kids. You can come in and decorate sugar cookies. Wonderlust is doing, from three to four and...
Five to six.
Five to six is doing, come in for the kiddos and make a craft, a Christmas craft. They're gonna have specials in the shop, and also, you know, all the holiday cocktails you'd like to drink. Now, come on, there's probably a limit.
They're not free.
Yeah, and then as far as the event from four to five, we're gonna light the Christmas tree and then the Christmas, the new Christmas decorations that the city and sponsors will be highlighted that evening as well. And they'll be highlighted in the Evansdale News. And we just wanna thank our sponsors for helping us, partnering with us to buy these new Christmas decorations, 'cause they're much needed. We have new snowflakes with blue stars in the middle, and they're just beautiful. But that all will be lit on that night. Santa Claus, Hot Cocoa, popcorn, candy canes, carolines. Yeah.
Is Adam Santa Claus?
I am not.
No.
This year, anyway.
And you'll get to see our favorite Ted. You'll get to see our favorite Ted from Ted's Home and Hardware. Santa Claus. Yeah, that's right.
The Sweet Adelines will be here at four-thirty.
Okay.
The Sweet Adelines Barber Shop Women's Group are coming to sing carols from four-thirty to four-forty-five. And when the lights flip.
Council? I'll take a motion to adjourn, then.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Thanks, Justin.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you. Night, all.
Good night.
Good night.
To all a good night.
To all a good night. Yes. Um, right here, where the tree is. Just slightly west of Evans at Lafayette. We have the street closed off, there'll be a lot of people around there. There'll be tents up there.
You can park in the shopping center.
Have you guys discussed the potential for a town hall meeting at all?
Actually, Justin talked to me about it, so that'll be something that will be addressed in going forward.
Bye, Dick.
Even if it was only fifteen minutes after every town...